Good evening. Thank you for joining us. We will be getting started here shortly. Perfect. Okay, good evening. It is officially 6:30. We're going to call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting to order. And budget work session number one, and we will determine if a quorum is present. If quorum is present, we will forego the invocation and do the pledge of allegiance. Chief Kobe, will you lead us? Thank you, Chief. Okay, first up, citizen comments. I don't think we have anybody signed up. We don't have anybody with us. First item is conduct budget work session number one, preliminary revenues. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you load up the presentation? There should be shared already.
Yes, sir. Is it this one right here?
Yes, sir. I'll let the fire chief do the fire department one. Mayor Council, I just wanted to, obviously, we canceled the first budget workshop which we had scheduled on Thursday, so this becomes the first budget workshop. That Thursday, we were just going to do preliminary revenues anyways. So now what we've done tonight is condensed it a little further. We're going to do preliminary revenues in the fire department, and then on Thursday, we're going to take up admin, police, and public works presentations. And of course, another agenda item's been added to that. So I wanted to give you quickly an overview of our revenues. Of course, this does not consider right now in this presentation property tax. We're supposed to get from the tax office the information that we need to prepare that the last week of this month. Of course, right now, we have sales tax, mixed beverage tax, franchise fees, court fees, permits, licenses, code enforcement fees, police, fire revenues, garbage, and passports. What I'll also talk to you about is council budget goals and objectives. I'll kind of tell you my three ideas and things I would like to see and work on in order to carve out some funds related to those, and then I'll present the final meeting schedule as we move forward with these budget workshops. First one, sales tax. 2021 budget was 1.1 million. You know, we are optimistic by the sales tax numbers. We've continued to see growth in this area and did not seem to be too much impacted by the current pandemic. We are hopefully with the uptick in new businesses opening in Castle Hills, the sales and mixed beverage tax will continue to trend in the positive direction. The 2021 sales tax through June is reporting close to 652,000. So we're on pace for, you know, closer to 1.3 million projected revenue this year. That is also the same number that we've kind of projected to identify for the 2002 proposed budget is 1.3 million in sales tax. We've also looked at, I don't think we had, but maybe, I don't think we had anything budgeted for mixed beverage tax, but we already have about 3,000 or 4,000 through six months, and obviously with some new development coming online, we hope to see that increase as well. We'll continue to monitor the next two months for possible changes before we adopt the budget as well. Franchise fees. You know, franchise fees are traditionally considered use of right-of-way fees, collected CPS, phone, fiber companies. 2019, that was the big legislation year that changed how cities collect franchise fees. We didn't see that much of a hit initially, but in 2020, right there, I've listed a few dollars that 30,000, 40,000, 8,000 right there from those entities that the fees declined that we collected in previous years. I believe we projected about 508,000 in revenue for this year, and we're probably anywhere from 30,000 or 40,000 below those projections for the end of the year right now. And then that's what we kind of project from the other entities right there from CPS, the phone, fiber, optic companies, cable, saws, sewer lines. Court revenue. Here, you can see the breakout of the five-year plan. I mean, the five years within there. The five-year average with warrants, court income, states, and steps. Court revenues has shown a downward trend in the past three years, largely tied to some legislation. 2020, 2001 budgeted amounts were lowered, but based on three years, additional decrease is needed. Prior to the pandemic, revenues were declining compared to 2020 budget amounts. 2020 number could have been attributed to the pandemic stay-at-home orders resulting in a decrease in tickets possibly. Five-year averaging impact of pandemic, the current revenue estimated a decrease of about 115,000. So what we're seeing is that there is a decline and has dropped drastically and probably even more a little bit due to COVID. Enforcement practices did change, but are starting to move in a positive direction with further enforcement as we hopefully come out of the pandemic. And then anything related to that, I will leave to Chief Zuniga to speak on in traffic inform with his presentation. Permit fees. Permit fees, we are very optimistic on the permits, meaning the budgeted, we budgeted 175,000. Through June, we have projected close to 88,000, which puts us above that projection if we stay on pace. This actually does not include some new retail stores coming online regarding the collection of permit fees, including the new Dutch Brothers shop. We have not captured that in the first six months. It's actually going to be revenue that's recorded in the July month. So again, I'm optimistic that we will actually probably surpass the projected amount of revenue in permits. As you can see, you know, we've looked at different ways. We're looking to revise the fee schedule to include fire plan review, fire inspection COs, and we're again trying to be a little conservative, even though we know we have new businesses open up. And we have a couple developments in the pipeline that may take shape next year that could see an uptick to that. But we're looking at about 160,000. Again, the same projection as last year with hoping that it will surpass it with the new development. Garbage fees. Residential garbage rates have not increased since 2010. 2021, with a city council approved monthly of 57. So last year in the budget, city council approved the 50 cent increase, and that got us about 10,200 in new revenue. I think we had asked for almost $2, which would have got us to the sort of I call break even and balanced operating the sanitation fund and not subsidizing from the property tax revenue, which we've been doing for years, would have gotten us, I think, $1.75, $1.50 probably would have got us that 40,000 in revenue that we needed that was in the deficit side. And as you can see through the projections here, what I wanted to talk about is the landfill where we go. It consistently every year has been an upcharge on fees related to environmental surcharge, regulatory costs. We tried to appropriate the right cost. We're actually working with land, wait, excuse me, waste management right now to get the figures for next year so we can add that into the revenue expenses for landfill payments. But as you can see, specifically in 2020, you know, it was about 132,000, and we've averaged in the last couple of years about 120,000 and had to adjust that line item accordingly. But last year, again, I think that there was an increase to stay-at-home through the pandemic, and as you can see there, we're about 74,000 in expenses to that landfill, projecting and on pace to over, you know, 145,000 there. So what I would say here, last year, obviously, we forecasted near 44,000 revenue. The 50 cent increase will get us close to 10,000 in revenue each year. Here, I wanted to show you again what the breakout now, previously was about $25 plus sales tax each month for residential garbage collection. We also wanted to look for other ways to cover this cost. I know we kind of talked about it before, you know, adopting a franchise fee on commercial trash providers, increase the residential rate, possibly charge for brush, change for front door pickup, determine if any negotiated lower rate, however currently discounted at the landfill. These are other remaining revenues that we have. False alarm fee fines, restitution fees, report fees, fingerprints, revenue rescue miscellaneous, and credit card fees. Passport actually was, you know, if we started out the first few months of last year was on pace. If we would have continued non-pandemic to be closer to 40, 45,000 in revenue. Obviously, we've seen in the last probably four months, we've been doing a large number of passports, and so we think right now we're about 15,000 through in revenue through June. So we think we're going to obviously hit or surpass that 30,000 mark moving forward. And then towing services, we're kind of going through the process to maybe go out for bids for a new towing. And then last year, we kind of touched on doing interlocal with another municipality about an impound lot. Some things have changed, obviously, since Chief Siemens left, the chief and that's other city left. So I don't know how much that may come to fruition and discussing with the new city manager, the new police chief in that city, if they're still considering this interlocal with us that would help lead generate a little more funds in the towing service line item for revenue. And then right now, I just kind of wanted to give you a summary of the preliminary 2020 numbers for what we're projecting, and then some of the differences and change from the budget itself. And then moving forward, additional items for consideration. Obviously, we'll have the property tax rate assumptions later. Obviously, that our employees did not get a COLA last year to consider certain portions or some parts of a COLA, whether that is two, three, or possibly higher than that percentage-wise, since there was no COLA that year, obviously depending on the revenue. You know, I don't think any of our departments right now are calling for additional positions. Maybe in the police department, but I'll leave that to Chief Zuniga from that standpoint. We'll also try to get a better rerate on our insurance. We will be providing through our departments budgets future capital equipment, and then we will obviously budget accordingly which future capital projects will be doing next year. And then, of course, as we move through the budget, especially when I deliver the proposed budget, reviewing of expenses and revenue in those line items. And then, of course, we have our special revenue funds. So councils, budget goals and objectives. Some of the things from my standpoint, I wanted to kind of go through with you as and review is a long-term strategy for our sanitation collections, really look at our operations, look at our rates, and obviously study the feasibility of private versus municipalization, which is currently in place. I'd like to also try to dedicate some funds for development of a beautification maintenance program of our cities right-of-way and monuments. Right now, we're working on improving a few monuments. I would like to, right now, putting together a plan for mowing with text dot to try to do some frequency mowing in between text dot so we can keep our right-of-ways clean and mowed. And then cities compensation retirement plan, considering and looking at the two to one, again, I know it was looked at a few years ago, and then really looking at some of the department's salaries, especially like in public works, some of our laborer positions, kind of looking to survey what other cities do to make sure we're competitive with recruitment. And then, of course, looking at the health insurance rerates, and I don't think we have time this year, but I would certainly next year like to start early at looking at our health insurance down the road for next year. Right here, I have a list of the meetings. Obviously, we have a council meeting, our second budget workshop Thursday night for administration, court, police, and public works. Then the week of 27th, August 2nd, we'll get the calculations from the tax assessors collector's office, and then submitting the budget on September 5th, and then discussing the tax rate on the 10th. Special city council meeting if we need it on the 17th. 18 would be publishing the notice. Special city council meeting budget workshop if necessary. Notice of budget hearing on the 25th. And then as we move forward, will be on September 7th. We will be doing the budget public hearing, schedule announced meeting to adopt tax rate, and then on the 14th to adopt the budget and levy the tax rate. And council, mayor, open up questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. I guess we'll go into 4.2 discussion, and we'll ask questions there. 4.2 council budget guidance and discussion.
Yeah, and I think from that standpoint, I wanted to relay my kind of goals and objectives, what I'd like to do in this budget, and I would like to hear from council or individual council members. Kind of like last year, I was asked by different council members to see if we can try to carve out funds for different projects or different services from that standpoint. So I'd love to hear from y'all at this point.
I guess, are we talking about the budget as a whole, Mr. Rappley?
I think so. Yeah, I mean, collectively, again, I'm trying to put a proposed together in a few weeks, and you know, I'm kind of asking from a council member's standpoint if there's things you'd like to see implemented or try to identify it in the budget process.
So I'll go first if nobody has any comments, but I really wanted to be able to get into the conversation with public works and sanitation. I understand that we're going to be considering going out to privatization. In some of the conversations I've had, particularly Mr. Isbrand, was I'd hate to lose quality of services in Castle Hills for the negligible amount that it is for us to charge more. I'd almost prefer to provide more services if it meant we could do a bulk drop-off once a year, which people have been asking for, or if it meant we could invest in the trucks and provide the tilt so that people could use a bigger trash can. I know there's a hydraulic machine that will tilt so that we don't have to worry about the people in public works hurting their backs. I feel like the more that we can do to provide a higher level of service into investing Castle Hills would potentially position us better, especially considering, I think, we're paying about $25 plus tax, and I think privatization could be two or three times that, obviously.
Well, and then it might change your service to once a week based on a larger can.
Sure.
So, and again, what the cost may do to brush or recycle itself. So if council is desired to go that way from a comparative standpoint, then obviously we would go out for proposals. That contractor would have to submit based on what we currently do, what that price would look like moving forward. That would give us that rate.
For me personally, I at least would like to explore offering more and further separate ourselves. You know, obviously, we got police and fire that do a great job, two to three-minute response time. I think public works is doing a good job. I think they're understaffed, which like almost any other business, I can understand. So I want to see what it's going to take to be able to let them do what they need to do and to do it possibly better. Does anybody else, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I couldn't agree more. I think that's what the folks love about this place, not only the trees, but especially the services that these wonderful guys and girls provide. So we need to support them as best as we can. But on my list, and I think is also staff broadly, not just sanitation, because the folks have not had the COLA this year, as Ryan mentioned, and also I think we have to address Mr. Rappley's salary as well. I think that's something that's on the list. But then another thing, I just have a couple other things here. I'll be real quick. I think one thing we really need to think about is the oak wilt thing. I mean, we've kind of wrangled about that, you know, over the last few months, but it sure would be ideal in my mind if we could have some sort of set aside. I mean, we have all of these special fund balances. I wonder if one of them could be from oak wilt. You know, but sometimes, as we've seen, the homeowner is going to get horsey, or maybe they don't have the money, who knows? But that's, those trees are precious, and those things threaten them, and in my mind, it's our responsibility to take care of it or to be prepared to take care of it if the homeowner can't. So that's, that's another thing. And then on infrastructure, one other thing on infrastructure, and I must confess to being a little weak on what we've said about alleys in our capital improvement plan. But I was at a social engagement the other day and went to the backyard. This was after all of that rain, and the alley was like a lake. It was really, it was embarrassing to tell you the truth. I couldn't believe it. But anyway, I wonder if we ought to pay a little bit more attention to the alleys. Probably the sanitation guys could tell us just what we need to know there, but in any event, I think that's something we need to look at. And I think, I think we need to help with all the department priorities. I remember last year, you know, administration, police, fire, sanitation, all these guys had these wonderful ideals that they would like to bring their departments to, and I would, I think it'd be really nice if we could help each of them with some of that. And last but not least, emergency management. I think we need to, we've talked about that last time, and you guys have done a great job. Thank you for the great analysis you provided last time, but there's going to be money there, so I think we need to be prepared for that.
And, you know, councilman, I appreciate that, and what I'll touch on too real quick is the alleys, because, you know, they need maintenance like the streets. And so there may be some dollars, you know, within one of Rick's line items that we can get a contractor to go out, because again, our trucks are going to be traversing down there, and then there's, there's residents who use their alleys to access their driveway. And I know Rick has, a few of alleys have done a great job on trying to maintain those, but, you know, again, time and equipment may not be there, so it may be better just to look at getting a contractor to help those out in those specific areas to correct them. So, and then on your, on your oak wilt, you know, obviously, we're going to be coming through with a budget amendment because we didn't have the budget for the oak wilt expert budgeted, but I think that was vital for us to have had that done, because I prefer to Mr. Zamoram, but I think majority of those people did comply and spent some good dollars trying to fix and correct those. And so I think there's other areas that we need to use an arborist like that to address and notify for that leverage to enforce and to let people know and educate them that this is a problem. Certainly, we don't have the staff to do that. So it may be where we need to dedicate some funds and a line down for future dollars towards an arborist.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. May?
Mr. Rappley, on my list, I had the COLAs as being one of the primary concerns. And the reason is because inflation is already projected to be quite robust for the remainder of this year and literally for the next three years. I don't want to get behind the curve, similarly to the behind the curve on the infrastructure, and then it costs us, you know, much more in the long haul. In other words, I think we need to address that frontally, because ultimately, we're not going to be competitive with other municipalities in acquiring the talent to maintain the services that we have. So to me, that's a high priority. Second is the oak wilt abatement fund, which is slightly different, I think, in the way you described it. Those citizens that are being compliant and trying, putting out, shelling out money for fixing the issues and eliminating their own trees, we need to at the very minimum meet them halfway if we can. And so I'd love to see an abatement fund created, and I don't think it would be that expensive and take away from other projects. On the sanitation pickup, universally, when I've addressed this issue with many citizens who have called in, this is the number one thing that people are discussing, they love their pickup. They love the fact they have, you know, two pickups a week and options. So I I think that what we need to do is figure out other ways of funding, offering services, and then publicize it, because many citizens have said bluntly, I would rather pay a couple hundred dollars to get extra pickup, and knowing that there is going to be an uptick in maybe the monthly bill, if we have to justify it, I think one of the ways we can justify it with what the mayor just said is having a regular repository for refuge. That's been very popular with the people I've talked to. And the last thing I wanted to mention was the SB 1152, the local business code change that looks to me like has dinged us in three different ways, costing us as a city a total of almost 80,000 a year. So I'm not familiar with this, but is there any way, and I'll look at the law after tonight, is there any way that we can counterbalance the negative impact under this new law change? In other words, is there a way that we can recoup the lost income that used to come by those means? It's too far out. We have two years before the next legislative cycle, but I'm more than happy to partner with Councilman Isbrand in making this a legislative issue, because if there is no articulated upside to this change in the regulation, then why are we hurting our municipalities? That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Isbrand?
First of all, may I ask a couple questions, Mr. Rappley? Do you know when you expect the health insurance rates to come in?
We typically put in a number. Like last year, we captured a dollar amount, I think that was closer to, I believe, like a 14% increase in the proposed budget. And then when the rerate actually came through about two weeks later, after we submitted the proposed budget, it actually dropped to about seven or eight percent. So it actually shortened the dollars from an expenditure standpoint versus the revenue. So that was actually beneficial, because last year, obviously, we were transferred in from the fund balance, and so that helped decrease that transfer in a little bit from that standpoint, so. But we usually get that in. You know, Ms. Davis, when do we get the rerate in? Probably? But for the proposed budget, we put a placeholder in where we think before.
Okay, great. Thank you for that information. The other question I have is maybe asking you to look in your crystal ball, and it's probably unfair to ask, but I noted today that our county commissioner, Commissioner DeBarry had actually posted about the fact that housing prices in the metro area have increased 19% over the past year, and she was very focused in her comments about the impact on appraisals. Are you getting any signals from the appraisal district of what it portends?
Not yet. I asked, I just reached out to them and asked when we'd get this information because we need that, but nothing, nothing as far as potential or possible numbers, so I'm, I'm just assuming that we'll probably see an increase, you know. At least I'm hoping that property tax revenue will come in a little higher, too. So, but we'll have those figures, obviously, for the proposed budget hopefully in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you. In terms of, I guess if we're going through our wish list, I hate to repeat what others have said, but I also feel like that's probably a good sign that we're all saying the same thing, because we're identifying the key areas, and I'll withhold any other comments I have about public works until the public works budget comes up. But I do want to say that I couldn't agree more with your comments, Mayor, about, you know, what distinguishes Castle Hills or any suburban community is the uniqueness of your police force, your fire department, your public works department. I said here in one of our council meetings not too long ago that I view our public works employees like I do everybody else who's on city staff. They're ambassadors for the city, and they're much beloved for the work that they do. I think that, you know, we're going to have to have some tough conversations, not just budget conversations, but about, you know, how we look to the future of how all of our public works needs are taken care of. But in addition to the comments that you all But in addition to the comments that you all and Mayor specifically, to the things that you suggested already, is I, I hear time and time again, an appeal for us to have a heavy trash drop off or pickup day. And I think what we learned from the, having the dumpster here from all the brush, from the storms and then the storms and top the storms and all that, was, you know, that the public, the community was very willing to bring stuff here. They were just very grateful to have it. And I know that there's cost involved there, but the one thing that we don't do that I think would be invaluable for, to our residents would be for us to have some kind of heavy trash drop off, perhaps it's once or twice a year. So that's something that I would put on my wish list. These other things are perhaps a little bit more intangible. First of all, one of them is something you already said, Mr. Rappley, which is about beautification. I mean, I think that's, that's, if, if, if we don't invest in the way our city looks and in the way that our city properties look, you know, how can we hold others to that standard as residents? And beyond that, I think it's really what helps to distinguish the city. We've had a lot of conversation of different ways to look at, you know, bringing out the personality of the city through whether it's street signs or monuments or many of the other things that we're talking about. And I think that beautification is something that really does deserve to have some dedicated dollars to it and a partnership with organizations like the, the garden club to help facilitate that and ensure that we have that all the time, that it's not a one and done. The one thing that, I don't know if it's part of it, I think perhaps falls on this year's budget, maybe some of it falls to the next one. But I have a great deal of apprehension or desire, maybe I should say it in a positive, but I have a great deal of desire to see us ensure that our IT infrastructure is in fact secure and up to date and ready to accommodate what you would expect from any professional organization, including city government. I know that there's lots of, you know, software issues, lots of, there have been software issues, but beyond that, there's hardware issues. I know, I don't need to tell you this, Mr. Rappley, but I think this is an imperative for us because if you look at, and I'm sorry, I don't remember whether it's the Southwest Independence School District or?
Judson?
Judson, who was basically held for ransom, be, you know, because their systems were vulnerable and they just recently got access to things like phones again in the school district. It's imperative that we invest in our, in our IT infrastructure and in the security of it. So I hope that that's something that we can take a real good look at and whether it's a short term or long time, long-term investment, that we actually have a plan for growing, recycling in and out, the kind of equipment that the city staff should have here.
Well, I think from an IT perspective, we're going to have to tackle that sooner than the adopted budget probably. And I'm, I'm hoping to actually have someone on the August council meeting come and talk about our infrastructure plan. So you have an understanding of where we're at currently and the susceptibility that we are looking at right now, unless we do something.
Yeah. And I, and I think that while we may address some things short term, this is kind of like the things we talked about with emergency management, that this always has to be top of mind to us. And I think we have to look at a long-term plan of, okay, we addressed the need now. When will the need next come back? Is it next year, two years from now? What will those needs be? And how do we ready the city to, to, you know, take on the kinds of challenges that we will have and cybersecurity, et cetera? So I hope that that will be something that we'll be able to explore along the way too. Thank you.
And Councilman, you brought up the, the piece on beautification. I'll give you an example. Right now, if you notice the monument over by Castle Hills and Blanco, it looks pretty like a clean slate. So what I'm having is a professional landscaper go in, clean it, pull the weeds out, seed it, plant brand new plants in there, sustainable plants. And the idea is, again, our public works guys did a great job, but there's time and expertise about landscaping. And so if we want that to look right and be maintained correctly, we're getting this one-time planting done and then build into the budget a frequency for maintenance of the monuments itself. So they don't get out of control, so they look the same all the time, or we have to replant, just continual maintenance. So I'm working on proposals to find out how we can put those in the budget. Either we do it quarterly or every other month to make sure that those do not get out of control like they have in the past. So right now, we're working on the Castle Hill Blanco. The next one will be Travertine and Jackson Keller and so on, so.
I mean, I, I think this is one of those things where these kinds of small investments pay big dividends, both to the reputation of the city and to the property values of our community. So I appreciate your comments there, Mr. Rappley. Thank you.
I'm hoping that y'all really like what it's going to look like here soon, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. I completely agree as far as the dumpsters. I'd like to thank Mr. Rappley for making that happen and Ms. Tedford for negotiating such a good deal for us. Do we have any other comments, Council, before we proceed to fire?
Mr. Paul?
I'd like to piggyback, piggyback on the sanitation situation. I think we need to be prepared to determine what our actual costs are for the operation that we have and should be having. We know that it's isolated on our utility bill, so I look at that kind of as a separate situation there. If, right now I'm paying, what, twenty-seven bucks a month or something? If it costs me thirty dollars a month for whatever it is, we need to make sure, in my opinion, that we cover the cost of that operation. The citizens want the operation, they want what we have. Everybody agrees with everything like that. And so I don't think anybody's looking for a free lunch. So we, you know, last time we were limited because of the time before, fifty cents or whatever it was, an increase. We need to find out what it costs us. Landfill goes up, all this other stuff goes up. I think we're short of personnel over there in sanitation. I hate to see, you know, somebody mentioned a while ago about the backs of the, of our people and things. We got one guy on the back of trucks. We're just, we're, we're kind of, I think, short stringing ourselves in that particular area. So the point I'm getting at, we either need to get into it and do it properly and charge what it costs us, or get out of it and let somebody else do it. I'd rather keep it in because that's what the citizens, I hear the same thing. That's what the citizens want. That's my comment.
Well, Mr. Paul, if, on the slide there, if you look, obviously the deficit we're running for the cost of service versus the revenue that comes in. And again, I, you know, I know I've said this before, but this probably should have been looked at every five years as landfill costs do increase, but since we haven't done this in a decade, we're kind of working backwards. My goal has always been to treat this sort of as an enterprise fund that we're sort of breaking even or a little more revenue that comes in in case we need to spend other matters within the sanitation fund. But right now, you know, we're projecting a deficit in around the twenty thousand mark that we'd have to increase the rates, you know, maybe a dollar, a dollar twenty-five to try to make sure that we're, we're balanced out for cost of service versus revenue that comes in.
If that's the case, let's say it's a dollar and a quarter, let's make it two dollars and then by the same token, try to increase the efficiencies. Maybe we can cut some areas. I've heard some people say they don't see their neighbors recycling. Why do we recycle? Because, I don't know, I, I, from what I see from the recycle bins, there's not that many people doing it anymore. I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm just stating a fact. You know, my wife's the first one to make sure it goes in the recycle. But it doesn't matter if it's something that would, it costs us ten, twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars and, and, and that, not that many people may be using it. I don't know. Thank you.
I agree. We gotta look at the feasibility because as the mayor says and Councilman Isbrand, if you were to increase a dollar, we'd have to figure out that additional revenue that we could support, you know, the bulk pickup twice a year, those kind of things. I think as long as we're providing those additional services in those arenas, that the residents would be okay and acceptable for a two dollar, two fifty, something like that, if those services were provided throughout the year. Additional services, I'm sorry. Exactly. But again, I'm just, you know, being city manager right here, right now, having to address something that has not been done in ten years, I want to make sure that moving forward, the next city manager, whatever we have in place, that this council looks at it every five years.
It's kind of the same issue with streets, isn't it?
Yeah. I'm just throwing that out there.
Councilman Gregory? Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory?
Since this meeting is primarily looking at revenues, I'm going to talk about that primarily. There's some blanks here on revenues in various places, like there is no unaudited projection of how much STEP brought, brought in in 2020. We have no projected earnings for 2021. When can we, and there are a few other blanks, when can we expect those blanks to be filled?
Which, which one are you looking at, sir?
Under preliminary revenues on page, court revenue line items, five-year trend. There are several blanks, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven blanks on this page. My question is, when are those blanks going to be filled in? STEP program unaudited blank for 2020, projected ending 2021.
I think that's, again, combining the revenue that STEP made, I think what we did was, we combined that with court income totals. So it's, it's combined now with the court income through whatever is done through STEP. And right now, we don't have the, you know, we're close to finishing the audit, so again, it's unaudited 2020 right now. And then we're only projecting right now, we closed out through June, so we can see the numbers, what we think might look like over the next six months through revenue. And that's how we've kind of built this.
Do you feel that a certificate of occupancy is a necessary thing for the city to have and for people to get before they occupy their homes and businesses?
I, I'm not sure, sir. I mean, from a business standpoint, yes, residential. I'd have to defer to Mr. Zamorón on thoughts on that because I think that we've tried to account for C of, CFOs for residential, but I'm not sure that's been done over the years. But I know that we can't, you know, again, issue a permit, CFOs for a business until it's fully complete. So are you, are you asking for revenue related to CFOs for residential generating?
Certificate of occupancy, it just falls under that line. It doesn't divide itself between residential and business.
I think that's mainly for commercial businesses.
So it was just eight dollars in 2018? Eight dollars? I can't believe that in 2018, that was the total revenue of certificate of occupancy for businesses.
Yeah.
Unaudited 2020, eight dollars. Five-year average, fifteen? Those numbers look a little odd.
Yeah, again, I don't know, sir. I'd have to look at that and find out how that was accounted for.
Thank you.
Obviously, it's not something, go ahead, Lou.
I might be able to shed a little bit of light on that. I don't know how the line breakout on that particular item is done at the financial reporting level, but the CFO is collect, commercial, let me just tell you that we collect CFO fees for commercial entities only, not for residential. Having said that, it is collected under a general building permit. So I don't know that it's broken out from the actual permit pot, if you will. I don't know if there's a separation that way. There may be where you're seeing that partic, one particular CFO was issued under a different dropdown window that let it be reported under that. I, I don't know how that breakout is in code, but I, I could address the issue and tell you that it's probably, well, it's rolled in to the general permit fee bucket that you're seeing.
Are you telling us that no longer we issue certificate of occupancy for residential homes that are?
Certificate of occupancies for residential homes have always been an option. It's so that we know who is in there. The re, the certificate of occupancy makes the structure occupiable. But the city, this city is not the regulator of whether a house is occupiable at the time of sale or transfer. If there's a question as to the habitability of a structure, that's a completely separate issue, that's a co-compliance issue, that's an international building code. The reason that we get a CFO for businesses is because those businesses have to undergo inspections under the authority of the departments that have the authority to inspect commercial structures. Fire cannot inspect a residential area. Of course, we're, we're not talking about short-term rentals. We're talking about just a regular person's house. There, there's just absolutely no fire code that says, hey, you have to have sprinkler system, you have to have, whatever the case may be to make it occupiable. So we're out of that business. The building inspector.
Commercial CFO revenue is built into what you see as far as the dollars that show in the permit inspection fee line item that we get in.
Since that's a pub, since that's a semi-public entity, it has to go through those levels of inspection and we collect a fee for that to recoup the costs of our third-party vendor inspector and also ostensibly the staffing hours that the fire department does on those inspections.
Well, I find that interesting because I can remember five or six years back, it was a great debate when people were adding on adjunct buildings to their homes. If they didn't receive a certificate of occupancy for those new additions, they could not occupy it. So when did, and I know that for a fact, that that occurred when Mrs. Hoyle was, was the city manager and Mr. Smiley was the mayor. So when did we change that view to where we don't, we don't go and look at, at these buildings when they're built and pass favor one way or another on them?
We do, sir.
We do.
We do under a building inspection, not under certificate of occupancy.
How that answers it then. Next thing is garbage fee, residential.
Thanks, Lou.
Is this the only landfill? That's run?
I think there's.
Is any other landfill run by any other company?
Yes. Yes. So I think this is one that the city's been using now for, I would assume, over a decade. I think it's based on the proximity to our city. Because I know there's another contractor who has a landfill, but that's closer like on your way out to Seguin. And of course, City of San Antonio has their own, unless you can work a deal with San Antonio, Councilman.
Well, I just wondered, because if we're, if the increase in 2016 was thirty percent, then seven and a half, fourteen, five, eight, and now ten. It seems to me, since the inflation rate has been running around zero to one percent for quite a few years, why aren't we seriously looking at the cost to go somewhere else?
So, Mr. Rappley, if I may, there's two landfills. There's Republic, which is going out, ten, Ackerman Foster Road, and there's Waste Management's Clovel Gardens, which is on Ray Ellison. The City of San Antonio utilizes Clovel Gardens. I know that because I go there regularly. I use that for my business. And the rates, I, I think they kind of are what they are, as far as I know. That, that's about what I can add to the conversation.
Well, I'm just wondering, are we subject to the, well, I think the confiscatory rates?
Well, I think every year, you're going to have a rate increase through them because they get regulated through TCEQ and fuel surcharge. So they have their own costs of doing business there, right? So it's passed on to us. Again, we're playing catch-up because we have not had done anything to the rates in so long. You know, we're just kind of catch-up. I remember two years ago, I moved the landfill line item fee from eighty thousand to a hundred and twenty, based on the projections. So we did target that. Next year, we came right at that target. Now this year, we put in another hundred and twenty, but as you can see, the ton is significantly higher in 2020, maybe because more people are home, consumption, but that is going to, you know, that, that winded out a hundred and thirty-two thousand. So you could see the last two years, eighteen and nineteen, where I had plugged in a hundred and twenty thousand in the landfill, we were slightly below and slightly over in those two years. You know, again, this may be anomaly based on the total tons because of what happened with the pandemic. But now, the, what we're still looking at is that we're going to be over significantly in that landfill fee. And we're hopefully catch-up because we, we got a little bit of a late start notifying people of the revenue increase, so we'll hope to capture some revenue throughout the next six months here that's going to help reduce that cost to the revenue that comes in. But again, we're playing catch-up from ten years ago.
Well, this sort of rolls into what Councilmember Paul was talking about. We're going to have this overall view of raising prices. I think we ought to figure out exactly where we are and what we're comparing things to. I think we ought to know exactly what it would cost to. I think we ought to know exactly what it would cost to switch to another landfill, what their history is. Have they been raising it like waste management? There's no sense doing that, changing if there is as bad as waste management. But I think we need to have those answers before we go about and do anything, before we raise taxes on things. We've got to know where we stand and what it would go for.
I think, again, hypothetically, say if we privatized and we went out for bids and, you know, Republic was selected, they'd roll in that cost, you know, to taking the garbage to the landfill. And then, of course, whenever you have a contract like that, their CPI, the Consumer Price Index, they're going to bump that up in relations of cost of doing business at landfill because I've been there before with the city before, that that's happened every year. CPI was different based on the contract for the cost of doing business for use of that landfill. So no matter what, we're going to be paying for landfill. It's just a matter of making sure we keep up with the revenue that comes in to pay for that service based on the cost of doing business at those landfills.
And also that we get the best landfill for the money rather than just rolling over and accepting whatever waste management charges. We ought to at least investigate other possibilities and really investigate it. For quite a few years, up to 2009, the city was paid monthly checks, good checks, by a company that was buying our recyclable material. The Great Recession hit, that stopped. And then we presented bills by that company that we owed them money to take away stuff. And I think we stopped that. Are we, and that worked very well for quite a few years. Have we, should we, I think we should, but should we look into, see whether there are companies out there today that will pay us to take our recyclable materials away? As it occurred for about five years up to 2009.
Well, I think back then, it was dependent on what can or can't be recycled.
But it did happen, though. That's my point.
Maybe, and I think times have changed in the recycle business, too. Again, our goal is to try to recycle to get a discount on the total tonnage charge at the landfill currently. So the more we get credit for recycle, the less we get hit for that total expense each month. That's why it's important that we do recycle and we recycle right and they accept it. Because if they don't accept it, again, if your recyclables are in plastic bags and we take it there, they won't give us that credit.
But my point is, there were business, there was a business, at least one, out there until the recession hit, that paid us for the recyclable material. And it was a nice check every month. And then things changed. I'm saying, I don't know what the environment is right now. I don't know if there are companies that buy recyclable material. I can't help but think they've got to be. But I think that's something we should look into again to see if the, if companies exist that do what they were doing as recently as 2009. That would be a preliminary revenue. We're sticking with revenues as the theme. That might be an increase in the revenue and a decrease what we pay to the landfill because that tonnage won't be going out there. Somebody else will be taking it away and paying for us.
I think most cities across the border are seeing drastic decreases to revenue from recyclable. But they still do it because, again, it's the right thing to do and it saves space at landfills. And then, again, tonnage cost from when you, when you do provide trash, garbage, and everything like that. It does help your, your bottom line expense for garbage service.
Under preliminary revenues for remaining revenue, you mentioned a city that was, wanted to go into an interlocutory agreement with us, but now isn't. What was that city?
That was, I believe it was Leon Valley.
Well, now that those lights that give you a picture when you don't make a right turn correctly or have been declared outlaw, perhaps it'd be more open to going into that again.
Yeah, I don't know. There's change in city manager, change in police chief there. So different philosophy, different practices, different mindset. So, you know, I don't mind discussing it with them if they're still open to doing that. But I do, I'll let the chief speak to that because I know that he's been discussing going out for towing bids again. So I'll leave him to speak to that one.
Also, for years, we were receiving substantial amounts of money when we did, we were using the people over there to, for other cities to collect incoming emergency calls and the like. That faded away because the chief at the time said he was actively looking, but no city wanted to do that again when we had quite a few cities to do it and we just had invested a quarter of a billion dollars in all the new equipment. I would suggest that we have new eyes and fresh eyes to go out and see if any other cities would like to do that with our dispatch. And then we might pick up, we were picking up substantial revenues doing that for other cities and to see whether or not that is still done at all. I don't know whether it is or not. But we have the state-of-the-art dispatch material that we paid by the Crime Control District. And we were providing a service for other cities and getting paid for it. I would hope that you would go out and make a serious effort to see if we can start doing that again because it was a very significant loss of revenue when we stopped.
Yeah, again, I'd have to consult with Chief Zuniga and figure out what can or can't be done from our dispatch. I agree with you. I mean, it's something that we should look at. And if it is revenue that can come in, if we can handle it and it doesn't impact Castle Hills' response, then, you know, I'm good with that. But I don't want to impact our response time from our fire and police. But I can look at the feasibility of that.
Since, as I say, this has primarily been a budget workshop on revenue coming in. I'm leaving my other comments, and I've got a whole plate full of them here, to the appropriate time. Thank you.
We'll wait till the next meeting. Just, just a couple of things, too. I didn't mention the presentation. We started talking about, you know, different expenditures. I would like this council to look at the seed fund comprehensively. I would like to lay that out over the next few years to figure out what expenditures are going to come out of there. Prioritize those. You know, I need offices back there. Our staff need offices back there. We've got to get a conference room and a court office built. So we've got to improve the IT infrastructure. So there's things that I'll be bringing forward that I think need to happen quicker and the use of seed funds being readily available to do that. Another thing I just want to acknowledge, I was going to send this out to council. The funds that, from the American Rescue Plan, I'd like to thank Chief Ludwig and Nora Davis because they've been working on our application to the Texas Department of Emergency Management. And the chief got an email saying that it's been accepted, approved. And I will send out the details on that to council. But we were supposed to receive some dollars. Those would be with restrictions. I think there's some eligibility based on our size population. We're talking up to 1.1 million that we could possibly receive from this. So I'll send out further details. I just wanted you to know that, you know, the chief got that acknowledgement from TIDAM today. And so I appreciate Nora and Chief Ludwig's work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. And thank you, Chief, Ms. Davis. Next up, we have 4.3 presentation discussion of the preliminary FY 2022 budget for the fire department.
Chief said he's got about 45 slides he wanted to go through with you.
Perfect.
Since I'm the only one presenting today, I figured, why not? Mayor, council, city staff, thank you for your time this evening. Basically, again, like last year, this will be a quick review of our needs for this upcoming budget year and also kind of a revision of our five-year plan since we were fortunate with the CARES Act that we were able to take care of some of the higher priority issues that we had in the department. Again, we went over our current and future needs, put on a priority, and also in relation to the five-year plan, looked at personnel, the fire station, our current equipment, and then also any type of revenue generators that we could actually establish in the fire department. Yeah, there we go. Okay. Our key objective in the fire department is, you know, providing the most experienced, the highest educated, and the best-trained firefighters to serve the city of Castle Hills. I believe in working out a retention program that fosters tenure within the department through certification and education pay, improved retirement benefit, where we can bump to a two-to-one at 7% and also continued preventative maintenance and updating of the fire station and our equipment. Okay.
For you, chief, if you want.
Okay, yeah, because it's not. Okay, thank you. I think increasing the experience in our department, again, currently, we're at one and a half to one and at 7% our retirement. And I know as a whole, through the fire service and the fire department, I think it really benefits the employees and the department. I mean, from personal experience at using TMRS, that additional 0.5% increase from one and a half to two makes a huge difference in the return on what you're going to see at the end of your career. I think it really gives the feeling to those firefighters that a bit of security once they finish their services to the city. Part also of this year is a vehicle allowance for the assistant fire chief. That would put him in line with other members of the city and other departments and also with him using his personal vehicle on different occasions, coming back and forth to work, and then on calls that he has to come into when he's not actually on duty. Again, visiting, widening the base salary for the fire, between a firefighter, lieutenant, and captain. Currently, there's not much of a difference between those ranks. And so trying to widen the difference between those salaries to give them a little bit of a bump for that additional responsibilities and their job duties that they have to do. What I was proposing is a 1% above COLA increase for the lieutenant's wage and then a 2% above the COLA increase for the captain's wage to help have a little bit more of a gap between that. Also, with the fire chiefs and the assistant chiefs' wages, make sure that they are increased to keep them competitive with the area departments. And again, a lot of this is based upon the salary comparisons that we've taken here. One of the key things that I've presented before in the past is the certification and education pay. I think this is very important for those individuals that, so we can keep the experienced individuals that we have and then also attract other individuals from other departments that have these certifications. The categories listed there are in line with other departments in our city that were paying certain education pay. Now, I did add three other categories because I think they're very advantageous and beneficial to the department and to the city. I have the inspector category also for EMS certifications, when they have higher certifications. And then also, currently, we do not have anyone that has their law enforcement certification, but we are working towards getting more individuals that can have that, that type of job duty. As you can see, I've got the overall cost for the categories and then the overall cost annually to implement that program there at the bottom, which was the 23,820. Okay, as we discussed in depth in the emergency management committee meetings and also last year, we're very limited on storage at the fire station. And now with working towards being more prepared with the emergency management and so forth, we definitely need a storage facility at the fire station. We do have room for it. In that picture that you see there to the left is where our hose tower that we currently do not need any longer because we had a special hose rack made to where we can dry the hoses indoors or outdoors. So that can be taken down and that would make room for a storage building. And that would enable us to store the current items that we have, either petroleum products, repair equipment, lawn mowers, and then also anything that we may need, such as salt, sand, any other things that we may start talking about as we work towards being prepared in the emergency management. Currently, our extrication tools, they are 2012 additions. So they are getting out of date and obsolete. We've been incurring more repair cost on these tools lately as we recently had one of the circuit boards go out on one of the units for a cost of $1,500 to replace. Currently, we have the hydraulic spreader. We have the ram and then also the cutters that we use. We're eventually going to have to budget to get these replaced. Also, with the newer technologies on the automotive industry, they're using lighter, more durable type of composite metals on these vehicles that makes it much more difficult to cut. And we had done some training here recently on a vehicle, a newer vehicle, and there was experienced much more issues trying to cut it with our current cutters that we have. Currently, we participate in a fire recovery program, which is a reimbursement program that we can recoup funds from responding to traffic accidents. Every year, or I should say, every month, we submit forms if these traffic accidents due to the actions that we've taken on scene. They qualify for reimbursement. In 2019, we submitted a total of $18,000 for reimbursement. And as of the end of that year, we received $6,000 in funds back. The next year, 2020, we submitted over $30,000 in requests. In so far, we've been reimbursed over $7,000. And as of May of this year, we've submitted $10,000 and we've received $5,000. So what I'd like to implement is taking that money and developing a fund to where it's only used to reimburse for purchasing of hydraulic tools. Since that money is what we get for using these tools and for absorbance and so forth that we've used at these traffic accidents, that we can earmark that account and the funds to only be used for future purchases of these tools and other items for extrication. As you can see, to get, currently, we did get three separate bids for the best price that we found that comes with the most different type of batteries and so forth for the tools. It's over $26,000. So just in the last three years, if we had been setting aside the funds towards those tools, we'd have almost enough to pay for them. So I think it would be a good idea to work with the city manager to see about developing that account. Rescue struts, talking with the officers and because of the amount of calls that we do make, we currently do not have these. And I think they would be a good addition to our rescue tools to help establish stability for the vehicles. We do respond to a few, well, quite a few rollover accidents out on 410. And as you can see there, that this would help stabilize. Currently, we use a wood blocking system and airbags to stabilize the vehicles, which is, takes a little bit longer than what it would take to put in these struts. So again, as you can see, for a complete kit, we're looking about $7,500. Due to COVID, more and more of our building permits and plan reviews and such are submitted online and without bringing in actual paper plans. And it has become very difficult to try to re-plan on a small computer screen. I've talked and seen a couple of different departments. Bear County Fire Marshal's Office, they have gone to these monitors that are 49 inches. And it's pretty much like seeing a full-scale of plans. And it allows you to do documentation, write notes. And it's much easier to give overall view of the plan than it is for looking at it on a. overall view of the plan than it is for looking at it on a computer screen. So this is another item that we've identified as a need for the upcoming year. Again, we last year, we started the phase one of kind of updating and upgrading the fire station. This is part of phase two, which I presented last year. It would continue to move into the next half of the fire station where it would address the kitchen area, the cabinets, and also the flooring and the walls and so forth for paint. Everything that you see in that picture is original to when this building was built 20 years ago. And as you can see, the Micas met its met its age. The guys are very adamant about keeping it clean and they've actually rubbed the finish off of it to where now it tends to stain very easily. And it's the laminate is starting to come apart from the wood backing. And of course, the flooring itself is the original floor, which has some some cracks and so forth, which the new going back with the newer floor as we put into the the sleeping quarters would float on top. So if we had any issues with any movement in the building, you wouldn't see it. And luckily, about a year ago now, we had the company come out that did the leveling of the building a few years back. They readdressed the movement issues we were having. They repaired it under warranty at no cost to the city. And so far, about a year out now, we've experienced no additional movement. So I think I think we've remedied that issue. I'm sorry, sir. It's it's the company, 2015 was the year that it had been done originally. And when we called the same company that did it, they came out, admitted there had been some additional movement that was beyond what was expected. So again, they they re-leveled it, dug out the piers, readjusted those. And again, we haven't seen any new movement for over a year now. Yes, sir. Absolutely. Or granite. And again, these are some more pictures of the kitchen area with the cracks in the walls. But again, they have not gotten any worse. When I first started there, they had considerable amount of movement and they were getting quite worse. And there are just some additional pictures of the countertops in both the bathroom and the kitchen area that we were planning on having redone. Now, this is part of phase three, which again will be not for next year or for the next budget year, but the year after. This will pretty much finish up all the interior upgrades and maintenance for the fire station, finishing out the rest of the flooring throughout. And then also the two bathrooms that you see are the the public restrooms that are up in the front of the fire station. So we would change out those countertops and bathrooms and the tile and of course, new paint and so forth. And again, those that's the hallway in the the office area. Since I've been here in the last two years, we've already had to change out three of the motors and the operating units on the bay doors. As of about a month ago, we experienced a more severe breakdown in one of the bay doors to where it actually started to tear two of the panels in half. So those panels are having to be replaced. And also some of the tracking is needs to be done. So I went ahead and had them put together a quote on replacing the three remaining motor units that we have that are still the original units and also replacing all of the doors because these are the original twenty year doors. And over time, as much as they're raised and lowered throughout the day, they are showing their wear and tear. Now, I plan on talking to them of getting a where I used to work, we had a preventative maintenance plan with an overhead door company. They would come out once every six months, evaluate the doors, grease, tighten. And I think we can prolong the longevity of these doors by implementing a preventative maintenance on them. But again, ultimately, within the next couple of years, you're definitely going to have to get them get them replaced. As we experienced during the freeze, we have definitely in need for all wheel drive vehicles as as the police department experienced their explorers were much better on the ice. During the freeze, the pickup that I normally that's the chief's truck goes home with me. Well, I left it up here during that timeframe so we could have ways to spread the sand and the ice and do the things that we needed to do during that. And if it wasn't for that already have an all wheel drive vehicle that, of course, we bought when we were in Maine, I probably would not have been able to make it into the fire station. So I know we've talked about it during the emergency management committee meetings. And I'm promoting, we've been setting aside money for a new vehicle for the fire station. So this is what I propose is to actually have an SUV vehicle, all wheel drive for the fire chief. And then that would allow us to leave the truck at the fire station 24/7 for the firefighters to be able to use for incidents in case of a structured fire. It gives them a way to get the fire hose back to the fire station and so forth.
Chief, quick question. What year is the current truck?
The current our current truck is a 2008, I do believe. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Twelve. I apologize. The the rescue's a nine. This one's a twelve. Yes, I'm sorry. It is a twelve. So I do believe it has some more years of life. It has about one hundred and nine thousand miles on it right now, but we're we haven't had any serious issues with it. Fingers crossed. Again, the final phase, another year down the road, would we would address the the bay area of the fire station. As you can see, we're a little overwhelmed for storage space. So again, requesting that storage area. And then also address the issues of the exterior. You can see there's a lot of peeling paint. Some of their areas are starting to rust and exposing the the stucco underneath. We have some deterioration of stucco on the outside. So again, this building has not been, you know, anything been done to it, I believe, in the last 20 years. So I think it's key that if we don't want it to deteriorate even worse, we need to address that in the next coming two to three years. A rescue in the upcoming years, I think it's the next two to three years is is scheduled for replacement. Currently, rescue is a F two F five fifty Ford with a fire box put on the back of it, a rescue box. It was refitted back in 2009. And the box didn't actually fit on the back of the 2009 chassis correctly. So they actually used some two by fours and other wood to shim it up to make it fit. We're starting to experience a lot of maintenance issues. It actually is at Ford right now because of a maintenance issue. I've just believe that we would get better value if going away from what's considered actual rescue truck and going with a mini pumper, which which is a fire pumper. It's just on a little bit smaller of a scale. Going with a commercial chassis would benefit us with a little bit less of a cost. But also, this would benefit us currently if our engine is out of service. Platform is our only pumper that we have left. And with the issues that we have with the tree canopy here in Castle Hills, we do have some questionable streets that we may not be able to get platform down without either ripping up the bucket on the platform or tearing down half the trees on the street. And by having this, this would accomplish having a reserve pumper. So when our other engine is out of service, we have a guarantee of another engine that can reach any any location here in the city. I know it's an increased cost to replace the current rescue. We're looking at about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand to to replace what we have. Of course, this is substantially more. But the lifetime of this vehicle is about twenty two to twenty five years where on the chassis, a Ford commercial chassis, you're looking about twelve or fifteen years. So you do get more longevity out of it. It would accomplish us having a reserve pumper that we're guaranteed to reach all areas of the city. It would also allow us to carry all of our extrication tools that we currently have. And it would also, part of ISO, your ISO rating is you get extra points for having a reserve pumper. And currently, the platform doesn't qualify as a reserve pumper because we always we already use it as a qualifier for an aerial apparatus. So you can't use the same apparatus for points for for both. So this would also accomplish us achieving more points for our ISO rating. Again, trying, I know fire departments aren't much of revenue generators. We don't have much opportunity, but but we do try to save money where we can. We do do a lot of inspections. We do our CFO inspections. We do plan reviews. And I put together a combination of sixteen other local area cities and what they charge. And there's a lot of items that we have no fee that we charge for plan reviews and for CFO inspections and so forth. So we could actually reevaluate that and help with a little bit of revenue. Again, for the fire recovery dispersments, putting those into a special account to where they can cover the cost of our extrication tools, both maintenance and replacement. We've developed a really good maintenance program within inside the fire station where we've started doing a lot of maintenance on certain items within in house instead of sending it out to garages and so forth. Even some of the the upgrades and remodeling that we've done to the department, we actually did some of the firefighters did a lot of the work themselves also. And then also, there are always grant opportunities that are available to us and we'll continue to explore those. Okay, real quick, over the five year plan, up this upcoming budget again, I would like to see implement the TMRS two to one at seven percent. Begin the education certification program to come in line with the other departments in the city, purchase of the storage building, the plan review monitor, and then the implement to continue the phase two of the fire station maintenance and upgrades. Twenty twenty three, the extrication tools, the rescue struts, again, the next phase of the fire station, the idea of replacing the the bay doors. And then also, I think at that moment, we would have sufficient funds to purchase the the command vehicle. Twenty twenty four, the final phase for the fire station in the maintenance and on the exterior. And then twenty twenty five, the the purchase and the replacement of the rescue one oh nine. Okay, I find myself very fortunate to be the fire chief for Castle Hills. I find myself having an outstanding staff of firefighters in the fire department. And I can't be more proud of how they've responded and how they've conducted themselves through the COVID and through the winter storm and and the changes that we've had to endure over the last year and a half. I I think it's very important to me, and I know to them, to see their retirement get increased to the two to one at seven percent. The certification, education pay implemented, keep their wages competitive. And then also, I think it's key this upcoming year to get that additional storage in the fire station.
Thank you, Chief.
And I think the next gap, if there's any questions.
Mr. Paul.
I want to go back to the rescue fund. You have an accident in the highway. We spend ten, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars. We do this, we do that to take care of the issue, clean up the cars, clean up the streets. We've had this issue before. Is there is there anything? I haven't looked at it, but you should know if we're dealing with it. Do the auto bill insurance to the liabilities to their comprehensive, is it built into the policy? Can it be interpreted that they need to be paying this, number one? Number two, if it's if it is, do we need to be turning these situations over to an attorney to be for collections for us? Because a lot of these people, a lot of these insurance companies, and you send them something, they'll just let it sit.
Right.
Unless they get pressured. Then the third item is, have you checked around with the other cities in the area? And if we don't have anything, it seems to me like it's something that maybe because it's only fair that we recoup with the expenditures on these things, that maybe we can, as a group of fire chiefs or cities, go to the state legislature and or the state insurance department and have these type of things put into the into the code for the insurance policies in the state of Texas. Just a thought.
Well, currently, the state legislature did pass a law that said it was acceptable for fire departments.
It was what?
It was acceptable for fire departments to charge for certain services that they provide at these traffic accidents. We do use a company called Fire Recovery.
Right.
They it's kind of like an EMS building company and so forth. And they're the ones that we submit our run reports to. And based upon what we've entered into the reports and Assistant Chief Covey takes care of this every month, he reviews all of the monthly reports, he'll submit them to Fire Recovery, they'll evaluate if they qualify for reimbursement. And whatever the allotted amounts are that are allowed for those services, there is a fee schedule for that. They'll turn around and submit those charges to that individual's insurance company. And then that's where we recover those funds from.
So you commented that there was eighteen thousand dollars last year or the year before. And we only got seven thousand dollars.
Correct. And those some of those are still.
Others are receivable? Are they going to pay us or?
They're still outstanding. So that's where they're left at at this time. Currently, I don't I don't know how long they leave them in that status before they get more aggressive at collecting the funds.
Wow, it seems to me that that's one area then that we need to look at from standpoint if we have to go a step further for with collection things because maybe they got more and they handle it and they're they because I'm sure they get paid a percentage.
Yes, sir.
Of what they collect. And but anyway, because I know that could be substantial at times. So that's my comment on that.
Mr. Israim.
Chief, I just have a couple of questions if you could help fill in my knowledge gap here a little bit on some of these things. I think some of them I may have asked you last year too, and my memory didn't hold. So on TMRS, the five, five and a half to one versus two to one, what do what is the preponderance? Or is there a survey that you have of what other departments within Bear County are doing?
There there you can't go to TMRS and it'll give you a total list of what all of the area departments are doing. Offhand, it does vary. I know majority because of everyone wanting to be competitive, they have worked towards that seven percent at two to one. But I do not have an actual number at how many of our local departments have gone towards that.
Yeah. And that was really why I'm asking that question because of the competitiveness thing. And I didn't know if it's something you can pick up the phone and call a friend in another city here and they'll tell you or or whatever. But I'm curious to get that sense of what others are doing or feel they have to do to maintain the caliber.
Yes, sir. I can I can get that information by tomorrow to to city manager rapidly and he can get it passed out.
Yeah, I I think even just, I don't want to say quite anecdotally, but just having at least a little bit of understanding would be helpful on that one. Just these are a bunch of little questions here. So looking at the certification, education pay page, it actually got me just counting here. So I if I count it correctly, there's eleven firefighters and there are eight officers between captains, lieutenants, assistant chief and chief.
Yes, sir.
Is that the typical organizational structure for a department?
Well, it's based upon their their manpower. Yes, sir, it is. Most departments try to have a minimum of at least five firefighters on duty and one to two administrative staffs. So you have the 15, um, and now of course, because of our, um, apparatus and our call volume and the size of our city, we have a minimum of six, um, or I shouldn't say a minimum of six. We have six firefighters and then we have a minimum of five that are on duty every day. And then the two office staff. So we do have a total of 20 firefighters in the department.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. On the extrication tools, I think you answered the question with your proposed solution to me. So, but I thought that was an interesting discussion. Um, so on the fire station phase two, the cost that you have here, is this actually now a contractor estimate? Or is this just our, for lack of a better phrase, guestimate of?
Well, it's actually, I did have someone today that submitted the first quote, you know, proposal. Um, based upon the cost of what it took for the, the sleeping quarter remodel. Also, I made some, um, some adjustments on, on my end. Um, this won't be quite as, as intensive. Uh, there will be no structural changes at all, um, just the changing of the, the cabinets and the countertops and so forth.
Okay. On the Explorer or Tahoe, um, you, you said that you've, oh, some money has been put away already.
Yes, sir.
This $39,000 cost, how much has been accrued so far?
There's been a total of $25,000 that's in that account right now as of the last paperwork that I have on it.
Okay.
But I know that quarterly, uh, they have been putting aside an additional amount and. Yes, uh, every quarter, additional $1,250 is being put aside.
Okay. Doesn't seem like a lot.
No.
And okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. On the, on the mini pumper, it actually begged the question to me. Cause I believe you said that our current rescue vehicle is in for service. What happens when that vehicle is out of service?
We, um, our engine is equipped with the same EMS equipment. And what it doesn't have on it, we take off of that rescue and put it on engine. So we can still respond to all the EMS calls on engine.
Okay. Is it, is it more costly to pull a big vehicle out of the bay?
Yes, yes. It's the wear and tear that on, on that larger vehicle. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. May.
Chief, uh, I just have a comment first and then just two questions. I noticed on the certification and education pay, there is not a comment or a column for compensation or incentivizing those who have certification in mental health interventions. Is that something you might consider?
I, I could. Um, I wanted to keep the columns in line with what we current, what other departments in the city currently pay to their employees. Um, there are numerous other certifications that the firefighters can receive. Um, and again, I just wanted to make sure that I kind of kept in line with what. But other certifications in the future can be added. Yes, sir.
I, I agree with your comment that law enforcement, uh, training is important for the community as a whole. But mental health intervention, I think if I had to identify one that really is above and beyond the one kind of training, I would apply this both to police and to fire. And that's something I think should be considered.
Yeah. And, and law enforcement's added in there because we, it would benefit us again, um, for being a fire mar, having to have a fire marshal here for the city. And then, um, again, part of being an arson investigator, to be able to investigate our own fires, you have to have your law enforcement. So it's, it's kind of a two-part, but again, adding another certification would be advantageous.
Uh, you mentioned earlier that you're exploring all possible grants.
Or, yes.
Are any of those grants you're exploring, uh, either matching funds or just outright grants for mental health intervention training?
Not as this, this time. Um, I'm not aware of any that are directly strictly for that. No, sir.
If I dig up some, you'd be interested.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Uh, and the last question is, have you, uh, done any amateurization of how much the increase in, uh, pension benefits would cost over time?
Um, I, TMRS, um, I'm not one of the qualified individuals to call TMRS. So they won't give me any information. It's strictly for Ms. Davis and City Manager Rapley. Uh, because it would be a, an overall citywide change. They would have to be the ones that would be able to produce those numbers.
Let's say one year, what would be the difference in a single year?
Um, I couldn't.
Uh, Councilman, that that's something we wanted to explore. We can provide that breakdown, how that looks, uh, moving forward.
Right. Thanks.
Mr. Joyce.
Very quick question, Chief, please. Um, on your final phase, exterior of the fire station, you have suggested 2024 for that.
Yes, sir.
Is that to include what you show with these photos of your, the exterior of the fire station where you have holes in the stucco?
We're going to do some patching and touch up on that prior to that, so it doesn't get any worse.
Okay.
But again, when we're trying to look at, at priorities and, and what we can afford and what we can't afford and what can wait, I think I would, I would love to get everything done right now, but I, I know that's not possible. So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gregory.
I first, uh, want to thank Councilman Paul. He had excellent comments for you to follow up. And I would like to see the outcome of his suggestions. That, that takes somebody who knows that type of business to come up with that. I really appreciate that. Councilman May wanted you to give an estimate of the two to one. About one, two, three, four, about four years ago, we had hour upon hour session on this two to one situation. And it was voted on and the, uh, the current mayor and Mr. Paul and I voted against it in, in the majority. And now it comes up again. I need a spreadsheet. I need a spreadsheet going out at least five years based upon the estimates of what it was going to cost the city. The costs are rather dramatic, if I remember the, what was the, uh, two-hour presentation that we had. And, uh, the city manager at that time just, no one asked him to bring it up, but he brought it up and we looked at it two different sessions. So we definitely need a projection out at least five years of what this is going to cost the city. I've totaled up all the things that you, in your want list, I have several questions. The rescue truck, the $485,000, is that based upon what it costs this year? Or based upon what you think it's going to cost several years out?
It's based upon within the next six months. So again, we, we project a, about a five, five percent increase per year.
Since new cars and used cars have gone up on average of 10% a month for the last several months due to a lack of computer chips. Uh, how does that affect a vehicle such as this?
At this time, it, it hasn't. But again, as volatile as all industries are, it is very hard to predict. Um, talking with the contractor today, we both are, are hoping and expecting things to be, come back to reality within the next year. Um, but again, that's.
Of this five-year plan, the estimated cost that you're projecting out around $135,000. Those are current costs, not projected costs out, correct?
On a hundred and.
Of all the things you wanted here, it's approximately $135,000.
Yes.
Is that cost, current cost or projected cost?
Current cost.
You do know that we're going to need in, was it 18 years? A, another new ladder truck. Now, we were told several years ago, it'd be at least a million dollars.
Yes.
Uh, I know it's difficult to project out that far, but we did have a sinking fund for this truck that we had here. So when we bought it, we had three or $400,000 in it. I would think the council has got to understand, we've got to have a sinking fund for all these things that are looking up. Because total cost of everything that we need or want is $1.7 million. And that's got to come from somewhere. And I think you have a lot of things here, but you have not prioritized the need versus the want. Now, the salary increases for all the various people, this, that and the other. I need a spreadsheet for that. I want to go back at least five to six years to see where we've come from to where we are now. Uh, I think it's a very, it's a necessary thing to know where we've come from to determine whether we're, what we're paying now is in line. Is it reasonable or unreasonable? That's an absolute must. For the two to one, as I say, I wa, I would like a projection out at least five to seven years of what it would cost the city. And I want to know what the projection is based upon. Um, I would like to, if you would, pass something, a memo to us or something to the city manager. Prioritize this as to need versus want. Is it more important to have this pumper truck than it is to fix whatever it is you want to fix or replace or repair, the doors or this, that and the other? I think it's important to get what is needed done first, not what you want to do. And I think it's very important.
And, and what I've put down for the 2022 upcoming budget year, I think is very important to the department and, and what's needed. And that's why the replacement of the rescue pumper I put back to the 2025. Because I believe, you know, it can, we can have the rescue last up until that time.
Well, I'd wager four years from now, we're, that, that vehicle, which you have estimated $485,000. I bet that's at least a six or $700,000 vehicle in four years.
It's, it's going to be very difficult for anyone to project, you know, what we're going to see to even just next year or two years later. Um, we have to have a starting point. And I know on, on the replacement schedule that I gave to, uh, to y'all last year on the spreadsheet, we kind of started talking about what we're looking at, when to replace certain items, what's going to be needed. Um, and then hopefully start putting more money, if, if available, more money aside for these future purchases to try to plan the best we can.
I agree with that, substantially agree with that. I think we ought to have a line item in the budget that as we do for the ladder truck, I believe we still have one for the ladder truck. We ought to have another line item for these expenses, which are coming up all the time. And in years that are lush, we can add to it. But I think it ought to be something we've got to do and not end up looking at a million, $700,000 of what we'd like to do.
Correct.
And it'll probably be two million by the time we get ready to do everything.
Well, and like, you know, Council Isbrand, I, I gave them the quote, you know, they're putting, we're putting $1,250 for replacement of the vehicle. There are some line items. I know there is a line item for, for the pumper. Um, there's a line item for future SCBA purchases that there's, uh, certain amounts that are being set aside in those categories.
Well, I would also like to see a spreadsheet for the whole department. That's, we don't have that here. I think that's something we've got to have now. So we can look at it and think about it when we eventually vote on the budget in a few weeks. The sooner you get that done, the better. I like, I, I'm, I'm real pleased with Mr. May, looking at that, uh, two to one thing. Because most council members, that's about as boring as can be. But it turns out to be a real briar patch when the numbers are crunched as to what it actually is going to cost the city.
Correct.
And as I say, that's why the vote went the way it did the last time. Uh, when do you think we can have these various spreadsheets available, would you guess?
Um, I can have.
A week or 10 days?
I can have them before Friday.
Really?
Yes, sir.
Brother, good luck to you.
Now, as, now as far, again, as far as for the TMRS, um, that has to be done by city staff.
We have to get that done.
Yes.
You can't just vote on that. There was a time when I went into one of these budget meetings many years ago when I was on the council, that the salary increases, they started off at the budget at three percent as they walked in the door. And before they sat on the council, they'd said, well, we want four. Well, how about five? Yeah, let's vote for five. They went from three to five percent before the council at that time even sat down to figure out what the cost was going to be.
I, I think Councilman, again, I've provided exception of last year because the funds weren't available for COLA. The prior two years, I gave Council a breakdown of what one, two and three percent does to the budget.
Yep. And I, and I appreciate that and I look forward to seeing that again. It's just not your department, it's all departments, because a lot of the things you're asking for, a good fire department needs. It really does. And I would really like a prioritization of the needs.
Yes, sir.
Versus the ones in your estimate, because I think you're one of the best fire chiefs we've ever had. I really do.
Thank you.
And, uh, because you think about what you're doing, you come up, you're imaginative. Um, how many? How many grants have you been able to find?
I mean, we've applied for two so far, um, without success. Um, again, like everything else with COVID, the availability of those are, have diminished quite a bit. Um, but again, we'll still continue, um, especially the ones that, um, do not ask for matching or 25% or 50%. Um, we've been very fortunate with the CARES Act and as, as, um, um, City Manager Rapley had said of the upcoming, um, American Recovery Plan, those funds, so.
Do you feel, in your professional opinion, do you feel getting a grant is a better, has a better chance using your personal method? Or should the city consider getting a person to hire somebody to go out for grants for all departments?
It depends on the grant. I've come to find out that there are certain, um, talking with people who are, have been very successful. And that's all they do is write grants and they go to all the meetings, the workshops. They have contacts within, um, Senate, different organizations, FEMA and so forth. That does give them better insight. And depending on what the amount that you're asking for and what you're asking for, I think it would pay dividends in some instances to use a professional grant writer. I know on some occasions with another department that I work for, um, we did use a professional grant writer. And come to find out, you know, two out of the three grants that they submitted, we were successful.
Well, since we've been in an experimental mood in the city for the last few years, like the password department, I wonder if the council would consider discussing whether or not we should have a professional grant writer. I have no, I'm agnostic at this point about it. But, uh, if it can bring in substantially more money than you think you could do by yourself or the other department it's can, maybe it's a consideration.
I think looking at, at facilities and large apparatus and so forth, I think it does benefit considerably.
Thank you.
Uh, Chief, uh, I, I do agree with Mr. Gregory that a projection would be great. And if you could get that for us, I think we'd all greatly appreciate it.
And that's on the TMRS.
And, uh, the, uh, the pay as well. I think Mr. Isbrand had a question before I get to my next one.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, Chief. I forgot to ask you, um, before. From the work of the emergency planning committee and looking at the budget here for the fire department tonight, I don't see anything in here that is specific to emergency management versus the fire department needs. Are you anticipating bringing anything forward for year one from emergency management that would fall into this budget?
Okay.
Yeah. So there's still more to come as they.
Yes, as far as emergency management goes, yes, sir. Cause that's, that's going to be more of a, a citywide.
Okay. And are we going to have a presentation on that? Are we ready to move that forward as part of this budget process? Kind of looking to both of you to hear.
Yeah. I think we're still in that stage though, um, with each department identifying their, their priorities and their needs. I know in the committee, we've discussed the key ones that, you know, the generators and so forth. But I don't think that we're at that point as of right now to really identify those to be able to present in this timeline for budget.
Okay. Well, we can, we can look at our emergency management line item to possibly put funds in towards the things that we have prioritized. So I think that's a good start moving forward as we develop future budgets.
Yeah, I think that might be a great solution. I just, I realize as we're having this conversation, there's a whole nother component to it that I realize goes beyond the fire departments. But since you're our emergency management coordinator, I wanted to put the onus on you to ask the question.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Paul.
I have one quick thing. We've discussed the probabilities, possibilities of having grant writers before. I'd like to ask Mr. Rapley to.
I'd like to ask Mr. Rapley to reach out to the people he knows. There, I understand there are grant writers that will work and do the grants, and they get paid a percentage, small percentage, five, 10% of what they obtain. So we don't pay them to just do something that doesn't come to fruition. And I'm sure that the city of San Antonio, I'm sure that some of the other cities probably know who these people are, and we need to reach out and try to get some of those, you know, because we don't have to put them on our payroll. We don't have to pay them unless they get something.
Correct.
Through the strictly on contract basis.
That's.
And I know that more than once, we've talked about in discussion with engineers that I think every engineer company that has come to us and wants to be part of our repertoire that tell us that they're good at grant writers. And I don't think we've gotten any grants yet from any of our engineers. You're smiling, Mr. Rapley. Am I wrong or?
Oh, no, I think that we can look at something or some assistance through it. So I was chatting with Ms. Tedford, but I could.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I, I think we can look at that, either assistance from other entities or trying to do it in-house in some capacity.
Whatever the case may be, but generally, we pay when we, when we're through planning. Thank you.
Chief, one of the things that you and I have talked about that I think it's important to the city is our ISO rating.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the first conversation that we had in providing value to the residents, I believe that seeing a lower ISO rating is something beneficial that would potentially lower their insurance rates.
Correct.
I'd ask, my personal ask is going forward through the budget to let us know what's going to impact that and what we can do to help the city get a higher ISO rating. And conversely, I'd also like to see where the other cities are at.
Yes, sir.
In, in, in that scale. And just so everybody knows, ISO rating is the insurance service offer, is it? I had looked it up earlier. Insurance services. I'm, I lost it. But basically, it's a rating based on the performance of the fire department. I think we're at three or four?
Yes, we're at three right now currently. Yes, sir.
And San Antonio, I think, is at one, so.
Yes.
That's, that's where we'd like to get eventually.
And it, it will take some, I'm, we're, we're not far from, there is a formula that they use, and it's quite complex, but we're very close to becoming the two. And I, I believe even where we stand right now, with some changes that we've made already in, in training and so forth, and through another high regard for our ISO rating is our communications and our dispatch. And I think they've already achieved some of the things that, that we could increase our score. So I think as of right now, we are able to get a two, and I've been in contact with ISO mitigation to kind of reevaluate where we're at, to make sure that once I do ask them to come in and do an evaluation, that we will achieve that too.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I, I just think it's something that we can show that we're doing above and beyond what we always done. And I think once we see where we're at in comparison to the other cities, there's justification for higher salaries for the people that we have here that have worked to get, to get us that rating.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Next up, we have four point four discussion and presentation discussion of the preliminary FY 2022 budget for Public Works Department. Mr. Rapley.
Mayor, yes, as I mentioned before the meeting, we are going to do the Public Works Department on Thursday due to the cancellation and condensing these meetings moving forward. So you'll see it on Thursday night.
Perfect.
Same time, same place.
Before we adjourn, I'd just like to take the opportunity to recognize our colleague here, Mr. Isbrand, and wish him a happy birthday. I'm a gentleman, so I won't ask you which year, but you're looking great. We appreciate you being here and thank you for your service. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. May. Second, my Mr. Paul, all in favor? Unanimous. It's eight twenty-five, meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.